Welcome to our work session. Today, we have a presentation by the folks from our pedestrian safety committee. They've been working both among themselves and with Jeff Ekinman at DPW, with Eric Kratz of the Police Department, and looking around and watching the world, and are ready to come back. Our intrepid chairperson, Carrie Roberts, I think is without a voice tonight. But I hand it to you all to introduce your thoughts.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees, community as a whole. Great day for a walk. So, let's jump into this. So, first of all, we'd like to thank everyone for their time, both tonight and in the previous meetings, Eric Noreen, Chief, Jeff, everyone, for helping us out to get to this point, all the feedback, the survey, which we'll talk about in a bit, the results of that survey.
Could you introduce?
I'm sorry.
Only because I don't know everybody.
We will, it's coming up.
I know your faces, but I don't know everybody.
These guys are airtight. You just wait.
Pleasantville Walks. Who are we?
Oh, you've got a logo, too.
We have a deep bench. Who are we? We're seven people that got together about a year ago, thanks to Nicole sort of kicking us off. Our goals are really to look at improving pedestrian safety, encourage walking for both the health of the people in the community and the planet. This is obviously a walking town. We moved here because it's a walking town. We're looking at ways to improve that, to promote that, creating a culture of mutual respect, not just for the pedestrians, but also the drivers, you know, trying to educate people on what's right to do and what is not right to do as a pedestrian. Who are we? Five of the seven of us are here tonight. Mary and Brian couldn't make it. Samantha?
Mary's coming.
Mary's coming. Adrian, myself, our fearless leader Carrie, and Tim. Why we came together? We love Pleasantville. We love walking through the community. Pedestrian safety affects everyone. Our school kids walk to school, bike to school. Improvements in pedestrian safety will help improve the future of Pleasantville as a whole, and we see it as an improvement to who we are. What have we been doing? Well, we've had a few drinks at the local bar to discuss this topic.
You walked.
Yes, we walked. Eric, we walked. Yes. We've been working with members of the community, reaching out to local government officials, as we mentioned, who've really put aside their time to help us out, analyzed current state of pedestrian safety, identified greatest areas of opportunity and improvement, looked at other communities around our region and nationally for precedence. Village Board and Administration, Superintendent of Public Works, Jeff, the police, we've talked about enforcement, community, safety. Eric's also helped us understand incident reports over the last four years, which we'll talk about. We have some overlap with other community organizations, Pleasantville Recycles, Climate Smart Pleasantville, Chamber of Commerce, School Board, Farmer's Market, and then, obviously, we sort of summarized all this with our survey, which was, we think, very successful. One of the things that came out of our initial understanding with Eric and Jeff is, and a bit surprising, was really where the incidents happened in the last four years, between pedestrians and vehicles. Out of the 19, I believe, incidents that were reported, eight of them happened on Manville Road, and three out of the four serious incidents happened on Manville Road. So, that actually came to a surprise to us, because there are sidewalks. We always assume if there are sidewalks, they're safe. This gets back to the dialogue between drivers and pedestrians, and educating pedestrians as much as drivers in places like Manville Road. Lighting, we spoke about. Jeff has undertaken some opportunities to explore improving lighting in certain spots, and that's a dialogue we want to continue to have. Sam?
Thank you. So, as we mentioned, we thought the best place to start was to conduct a survey, so it wouldn't just be our ideas, what we thought was the most dangerous spots or the high priorities, but to hear from the community. And so, we put together a series of questions, and we got a really great response. We had 653 online responses. I think it shows that people care about this and were motivated to fill out the survey. So, it's roughly 10% of the community responded, which is, again, great. So, to really summarize the results, and we will post the entire survey results online, so anybody can look at them in more detail, but just to give you a summary here, 44 people walk frequently. No surprise. 44% of people walk at least three to five times per week or more. Pedestrian destinations point mainly to the Village Center, shopping, schools, and parks. Again, I think no surprise there. The Village Center and major arteries are in need of improved safety measures. We heard that time and time again. Speed and traffic are two major areas of concern, as are a lack of sidewalks is also an issue that was pointed out multiple times. So, we identified three key areas of improvement and shared those with the police chief and village board, so we'll just identify those here. Bedford and Marble, which I think is on the upper, sorry, right in the middle. Manville and Sawmill was 31%, sorry, Bedford and Marble being 35%, and Manville and Washington. So, those are the three main areas. I put in some photos of them. Sorry for the lame photo skills, but just thought it would be helpful to kind of look at them each. We can go back to this later if we want to, to kind of talk about specifics of what we can do here. Obviously, this being Bedford and Marble is multiple intersections and lots of points of crossing. This is with the Sawmill literally spilling right onto that crosswalk. It's particularly dangerous, and speeding cars. And Manville and Washington, I know, is part of a larger discussion, and there's already plans underway to improve this area as part of the, I'm sorry, I forget the name of that project.
The Manville Road Project.
You could kind of call it what you want.
Manville.
Rebranded.
Rebranded, yes. I don't think it has a logo yet, as far as I know.
We're waiting. Come on, guys.
And just to pull out some key quotes here, some people are saying, "Speed limits are not held to. Pedestrians walk with no awareness of moving traffic." Someone says, and this was echoed multiple times, so we pulled it out, "My family moved to Pleasantville because of walkability," I can certainly say that myself, "and will continue to walk, but we have been terribly disappointed in the extreme lack of safety and consideration of pedestrians by car drivers in the village. The lack of sidewalks on side streets leading to major streets. You can't let children walk alone, and you can't be seen at night. Cars don't stop at pedestrian crosswalks," also something I've experienced, "especially on Bedford and the evening rush hour." So, again, there's lots more to learn from the survey, but those are really the main takeaways, and that was our goal, you know, one of our main points of conducting the survey. So, we've identified, as a group, three main goals. Safety, improving the environment and behaviors toward a safer community for both pedestrians and drivers. Education, we want to raise awareness of the pedestrian environment and people's rights and responsibilities on both ends. Community, really, we feel walking is an important part of this community and encouraging, you know, fosters community and engages discussion in working together towards this common goal. So, our action plan, again, broken down into these three groups. Safety, police engagement. We have met with the police chief about speed tracking and enforcement, particularly in these three key areas. Working with the village government on an audit that's coming up, and we'll hopefully hear more about that later. Some grants and improvement projects. The DPW also will touch, will be hearing from Jeff about that later. Bedford Road improvements that are happening soon, the summer, I think. Some lighting improvements, crosswalks, and signage. Education, we're kind of just getting started on this side, but I think at the start of next school year, we would love to work closely with the school board, do some presentations at the school, potentially create a safe passage routes map to hand out at school. I think there's a lot we could do to bring in speakers and just having some educational sessions. Community, we've developed this campaign called Slow Down, Look Up, which we'll show you in a second, and we're happy that on Pleasantville Day, we've made lawn signs that we'll be handing out at Pleasantville Day. We will have a table there. That'll kind of be our first major public event, and we, beyond that, would love to do, we'll have a presence at locals' events, maybe once a season, being at the Farmer's Market, as I said, Pleasantville Day. And then, we also want to do things that were positive and not just like finger-wagging. So, we had talked about the possibility of doing a summer streets program, maybe just one time this summer, that we close down one street and encourage people to walk that day, or, you know, to sort of have a no-car zone for an evening, a Friday evening of the summer, or something like that. I think this is great, sort of a great way to bring attention to the pedestrian, the Pleasantville Walks campaign, and get people out walking. Walking bus is another thing that we've, that other towns have done, which is like you have an older kid that walks younger kids to school, so you're walking in a group, sort of a safety in numbers kind of thing. Also, I think a really nice community, a community thing to do. So, to keep your eye on, the Manville Road Corridor Project. Yes, that does need some snappy, snappy name, which is the DOT grant. We can certainly talk about that more. I'm not the expert on that. Pedestrians' road safety audit, and the Bedford Roads Improvement. I don't know if we should, if anybody wants to weigh on that now. Why don't we go through all this, and maybe we can return to those things? Next step, we'll have an update from the police chief on the key areas. As I said, the educational program, I think, will work towards launching in the fall. And the DPW, I said, roll out of the Slow Down, Look Up campaign, so we'll share that now. And we have, we have to thank our designer, Jordan, who came up with both our logo and this campaign. So, as I said, we will have this as lawn signs. I think we've printed up, how many, a few hundred, 300, that we'll be giving out at Pleasantville Day and at other times, hopefully, I think the Farmer's Market would be great as well. And so, we really want to bring awareness. And the Slow Down, Look Up tagline is, was sort of inspired by, obviously, slowing down cars, but also looking up, that everyone is always looking at their phones, drivers and also pedestrians, and just awareness, and that it's something that we really have to work together to accomplish, to really have a safe town and a safe pedestrian experience. And so, then, we also looked at what some other cities and towns are doing. There's been some success, just bringing, you know, general awareness, and then, you know, enforcement, so some things that we thought were really, you know, could be effective and are relatively easy to implement, sort of the low-hanging fruit. So, pedestrian flags are used in Bridgeport, Connecticut, Salt Lake City, Seattle, Berkeley, and I think many other towns, and this is a very low-cost thing that we could actually, you know, there's things online that you can, you know, it's basically dowels and these things that you can buy online, and buckets that you would create, so that you would pick up a pedestrian flag, cross the crosswalk, and then dump it at the other side of the crosswalk. And basically, this just brings attention, obviously, to the walker, and I think gives them a little more power, especially for kids, but really for anybody. At night, they can be reflective, I think would also be helpful, so I think it's something that we should consider. And high visibility crossings. Some towns, this is sort of a, you know, cost-effective way to really demarcate the painted, the crosswalk in a more definitive way, I would say. I think right now, you know, coming off the effects of winter, the crosswalks, some of them are really faded, and we're sort of, we sort of, I would say, kind of ignore them, you know, cars do, I mean, some more than others, but some of them are only like half, you know, faded and don't really kind of mark the space very well. So, I think it doesn't necessarily have to be rainbow, but I think if we picked a bold color, that could really go a long way in, again, sort of empowering the pedestrian. Another thing that some towns have used and cities have used are these raised crosswalks, so it wouldn't be as much as like a speed bump, but as something that would indicate a change to a driver, and, you know, would have a similar effect of the painting, but I think, you know, it would also be like, I think those are bricks, a little hard to see from this, but, you know, would change the surface. At this, I don't remember what town this is from, because I did so much online research, but I thought this was an interesting example to consider, that they're really demarcating, mostly with paint, I think, and maybe partially the raised crosswalk of this, you know, this four-way intersection, and how that really, again, just brings attention to making cars stop in a different kind of way. Refuge Islands, I know that's part of the Manville Project, but I think looking at where else we could implement Refuge Islands would be a good thing, so that we don't have such very long crosswalks for people to cross. I know, like, the one by Jacob Burns, we're planning, there's planning a refuge island there, right?
Yeah, it has gotten less refugee.
Less refugee because of?
Driven in part by the turning radius for fire trucks.
Fire trucks. I remember the fire department was here one time.
That said, it's still going to be raised, but something they can rumble over.
I see.
Bumped out of the sidewalks, so there'll be a shorter distance.
Okay. So, I don't know the best places to put this right now, but I think it's something to consider.
Yeah, for sure.
And then, just something from Norfolk, it was an example, the Safe Routes to School, which I mentioned earlier. They did a map with the safest routes. They did a Walk to School Day, which was, I think, also great, just promoting, you know, promoting walking, and a Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, which seems like, why not do that? It's really nice. Someone was saying Doris has been the Crossing Guard for 20-plus years, so, and all the other ones as well, and the walking school.
She was honored by the Chamber of Commerce a few years back and got up and said her motto is, "No blood on my intersection."
We like that. We like that.
Unless it's not a driver trying to get through it.
So, I think that's it for us. What you can do, no, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. Slow down, obey speed and traffic laws, give way. I think changing the culture so that people really are yielding to pedestrians is a lot of our challenge. As I said, looking up, putting down distractions that are more and more omnipresent. And respect, show care for your friends and neighbors, be patient and considerate. Everyone in this crazy world just needs to slow down a little bit. Thank you very much. That's it.
Colleagues want to talk, but I think we'd love to hear from, please, Chee, from you.
So, just for starters, it's clear we have the right team on the job here. Really, what an impressive job. Thank you for that.
And I really want to give a shout-out to Carrie, who can't give a shout-out herself. She really came to a meeting a year, two years, no, a year and a half ago, appointed herself the chair of this committee, even though she wanted to not, and enlisted us all.
We fought, but we lost.
If it was not for her.
Turn my back so everybody can see.
It's okay.
You're fine.
We know what you look like.
So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So, we did have a meeting with the mayor, Eric Noreen, a number of the members of the pedestrian safety committee going on six weeks to two months ago, discussed the survey results and what was there, and at that time, we instituted, we had begun to talk about sort of what our spring and summer was going to look like down in the PD, and how we were going to address, obviously, not only these concerns, but just the changing in the weather and the fact that, you know, these issues are, you know, they seem to cycle around and come up, and obviously, have been a point of contention for some time. So, those three intersections that were originally mentioned, which is Bedford and Marble, Manville and Pleasantville, Manville and Washington, in addition to instituting traffic posts for both the day shift and the 4:00 to 12:00 shift, where the officers are assigned a location or given one hour on each shift to go out and do specifically to do traffic enforcement, we added those posts in there. We got anywhere between, you know, up to 13 hours of enforcement on each one of those intersections since that time. Summon's activity has not been overwhelming, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. Summonses really do serve a purpose. They are supposed to change behaviors and raise awareness and show the community our commitment to traffic safety and pedestrian safety, and I think we've accomplished that. On top of all those locations, obviously, there's school zone enforcement and other intersections that require our attention, again, all in the name of increasing awareness, changing driver behavior, and really reacting to pedestrian safety issues. So, I would also like to say that, you know, part of the concerns that we've had in some of these locations, too, is although we sit here as all residents or people who spend a lot of time here in Pleasantville, and that is our concern, many of these streets are being used as through streets from one side of the county to the other. There really is no way to easily get across Westchester County, and so, especially in the mornings, you know, we see a lot of traffic that's coming from Briar Cliff, coming from Osning, and heading over to Armonk, and they're going through the village, and so, we find it very important to make sure we're visible, and, you know, people tend to forget. People get into their own routines and do their own things, and they're late for work this morning, and so, all of a sudden, they're racing to get through a light, or they're looking to make a mistake. So, like I said, we've, I believe we've made the commitment, we're going to continue to make the commitment, to increase enforcement. Those walking posts, I don't know if I mentioned that, we have walking posts in the afternoon and during the day, where the officers are on Wheeler Avenue. Again, it's visibility. There are a number of reasons why we do it, but not the least of which is the visibility, you know, pedestrian safety, you know, we talked about sort of incorporating into people that mindset of being responsible, being safe, and so, having an officer out there, we feel, really contributes to that, and we're just going to continue to work, work on that, move forward, and, you know, just sort of raise awareness and get people to buy into this, to this concept, so. This is what I have for right now. If anybody has any specific questions.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I wanted to say, first of all, I have noticed the increased presence, and I wanted to commend you for that, particularly along Manville, since that's a corridor that I frequent. And so, the presence is noticeable. Have you considered at all enforcing pedestrian right-of-way at crosswalks? I know there was one meeting that I missed. I heard secondhand that you expressed some concerns about your ability to do that.
It is, it's an enforcement area that we take seriously, and we do. I wouldn't say it's concern. It's the realization, the way the law is written, it's very difficult to, I shouldn't say it's very difficult. It's not as easy, maybe, as people think to enforce crosswalks, because the pedestrian has to be on your side of the road.
Okay.
So, it's not as if, it's a strange part where we might not be able to, as, if someone's standing on the sidewalk, waiting to enter the road, and cars are going by, most people look at that and say, that, those cars are not yielding to the pedestrian, but until the pedestrian's in the crosswalk, that's when you have to yield to them. It's a strange.
So, when I step out in the street, which I am want to do at times, and they yield, that's the correct dynamic, according to the law?
Yes. Once the person's in the crosswalk, then obviously, they're expected to yield.
But if I'm just standing there.
Waiting.
They're not legally obliged to stop.
Let's put it this way, for us, in order for us to issue a summons for that, we have to have the person actually in the crosswalk, not necessarily just waiting on the sidewalk. Because, I mean, you go down to some of these intersections, people are standing, obviously waiting to cross the street, and cars aren't stopping.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean we're letting five or six people go by, even if the officer's sitting there, not writing people a ticket. It's, the pedestrian has to be in the crosswalk.
So, that maybe, I mean, we can talk about this more later, but that maybe circles back around to some of the suggestions in the presentation, the flags, or, you know, other.
But, of course, to me, that impacts, that goes to the issue of pedestrian walking safely. I mean, the safe thing to do is wait on the corner until the coast is clear, you know, you don't just step into the street, because if there are cars coming, and you may be right, you may be in the right, you're in the crosswalk, but then you get whacked by a car, the safe thing to do is wait, you know, so, I wouldn't expect somebody to step out into the crosswalk and cross just because they have the right to do it and the car is supposed to yield to them.
Right.
You wait. People have to learn how to drive safely and how to walk safely as well.
It's a gray area, though, because.
I think you made that point really well.
Sorry.
I mean, it's both. It's both.
Yeah. No, I agree with you, it's both, but it is a tricky thing, right, because there are situations where somebody could stand by the side of the road for 15 minutes, you know, and like, and so, so maybe it's, you know, part of the shift is cultural as well, right? Certainly, in some towns, cars will stop.
I think in some towns, people feel confident to just step off from traffic, because they know that people will, that the car will stop.
Right.
And I don't, I certainly don't feel that confidence.
I mean, in lots of places in Massachusetts, of course, this has been the culture for a long time, like, I feel a little bad, like, no, I'm not crossing, it's okay.
I mean, everything stops. Everything is different.
Well, and I think, I think there's, oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. That's both sides, right?
Yes.
In New York?
Yes.
So, the pedestrian steps off, and both sides of the crosswalk have to stop.
Both directions of travel.
Well, yeah, or is it just the half that the pedestrian is in?
My understanding is the half, just the half, yes.
Really?
But, obviously, with the timing of it, see, this is the other part, too, is that, you know, just within the downtown area, we have a number of different kinds of crosswalks. I mean, the crosswalks that are in, that go across from, say, the train station to the diner are significantly different in the fact that they're much wider, and their scope, the sightlines are much different than, say, Cooley in Bedford, where people might be doing 25 miles an hour, and you don't even notice this pedestrian waiting to cross until it's probably too late for you to stop, and there's somebody right behind you anyway. So, there is a certain level of, let's say, discretion or realization of what the challenges are for the, the officers realize that drivers motoring through town aren't, it's not someplace where, you know, it's a, it's a consistent sort of application that we have to do. And, you know, to be honest, we want to change behaviors, we want to be out there, but we also want to be fair when we issue a summons that we're confident that this is a reasonable, this is, you know, the person should have and could have known better and done a better job.
I don't know, there's no answer to this. Maybe you have some comment from your councils, but on the chiefs, I had the experience today of crossing Westchester a couple of times, and I'm 100 miles in in New Jersey and back, and for part of the way, I'm on a 65 mile an hour speed limit zone in the middle lane, and I'm literally getting passed by everybody on the left and the right. And it, not that it's headline news, but that wouldn't have happened 15 years ago. I mean, people are routinely traveling 75 miles an hour in the right-hand lane on a highway, and it just goes to the attitude, the sort of rush, rush attitude that trickles its way down into our streets. Do you hear this from your colleagues?
I mean, I think it's fair to say that we all sort of have experienced those concerns. I mean, different departments have different concerns, you know, I haven't specifically spoken to, like, Highway, you know, like, county committees. But I think, just in general, I think, you know, you don't have to look too hard to find a general sense that people these days seem to be much more concerned about themselves, where they have to go, what led to that, or how that goes, but I think the most obvious opportunity for that to present itself, or those different, those changing beliefs to present themselves, are when it comes to traffic. And, you know, this village being a walking village, you know, we don't just have traffic. We have pedestrian traffic, we have vehicular traffic, we have bicycle traffic, so we are faced with unique challenges, I think.
Well, what's interesting about it being a walking village, a lot of people are moving here because of that. That's how it's sort of, I don't want to say we bill it that way, but that's sort of how it's generally billed. It's a walking community. We don't have buses to school. I don't know if any of you know, but a lot of you guys know where I live, and I will tell you, living next to the school, when I moved in here 23 years ago, there was so much less traffic dropping off kids. People are moving into the village, and they drive their kids to school, and I don't begrudge anybody that, I'm not saying, hey, you know, you can't drive your kid, you shouldn't, you know, but there's just, there are a lot more people driving and dropping off, and I think to myself, A, if more people were walking with their kids or dropping, or letting their kids walk alone, if they're old enough, or depending on where they live, you'd, A, have more pedestrians, and so, there's more of that traffic, and the cars will have to be more observant of that, and also, there'll be fewer cars on the road in that tight little vicinity of, you know, Roemer Avenue, Ashland Avenue, Clinton Street, because there's just so much, there are some times when it's just a stopped traffic, and I think to myself, wouldn't that dissuade you from driving into that every day? I mean, you drop your kid off a few blocks away, or have them walk, depending on where they live. So, you know, I do think it's getting, I think there's more traffic for a lot of reasons. That one, I don't understand. I just, I just can't for the life of me understand why so many people, so many, yeah.
Well, I would argue, I live, I live. You know, maybe half an hour, half a mile away, or something like that.
It's far.
And, A, it's not really, though. I mean, you know, I came from Brooklyn, we never would have batted an eye to walk that amount. A, we're running late, because we're always running late, as I'm sure other parents can, and B, I don't know if I feel safe enough to have my kid walk by himself, and he's 11-year-old, 11-years-old, which is part of the reason I'm on this committee. So, I think it's that catch-22 that I completely agree. It gets all jammed up, and I know there's been lots of improvements, just in terms of the morning rush.
Truthfully, I don't get stuck in that. Truthfully, I don't get stuck in that traffic, because I'm either out the door before it, or I wait around till after it. So, it's, it's not like I'm, I'm caring about the traffic jam so much. I just wonder why there's so much. And it's a lot more than it was, I moved in 23 years ago. It was a lot less. It just, it just was. So, over time, it's gotten worse and worse and worse. And, and maybe that's the, the progression, and that's the kind of thing we need to turn around and get the progression going in the other direction.
Right. I agree. So, I think it's part about changing the culture, and really having people have more confidence in the safety. I mean, the crossing guards are amazing in the morning, really, truly. They're saints.
Doris will stand in the middle of the road, like she's going to take the car. She really does.
I really like all of your ideas for encouraging walking, including the, the day to celebrate. The crossing guards, I think, is great. Shane, who's behind the camera right now, has told me that, when he grew up in Pleasantville, that everyone walked to school. You know, no one drove, so, obviously, you know, there are a number of factors contributing to that. And you guys seem like you have a, kind of a good overview of the different angles. This is a bit of a detour, but since we're talking about crosswalks a little bit, I see that Kat Nammick is in the audience. And I love, I love the pictures of the colorful crosswalks. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think it would, we have so many artists in our community. I think it would be really fabulous to commission something. No, Jeff has something to say on this. All right.
There are rules about that.
The federal government, unfortunately, has things.
No, no. Oh, really? Okay. All right. Well, somebody will tell me why this is not... What's that?
I was all for it.
You're all for it? Well, that makes, that makes two of us.
Jeff, maybe you could talk about the code and what this...
What, what, why is that a problem?
Good evening. There's, we have to file the MUTCD. It's a manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And there are specific colors that you can, you use when you're painting and doing things out there. So, we would be limited on what we can use on roads.
Is there any wiggle room, or is there anyone one can talk to for an exemption of some sort?
Well, the MUTCD are federal regulations, so...
They're federal regulations. So, how, how would these people have gotten away with it, then?
I don't know. I don't know where they were, or, you know, I know one of the photos that you had up there was an artist rendering, because I looked at the trees, and the trees were superimposed, so that was a proposed...
There are definitely cities that have implemented...
They can. And, you know, under the, like, under building codes, we are allowed to implement stricter codes. But you have to go through a process to do that. I haven't seen colored, you know, crosswalks around in all my travels. I'll be going down to Georgia in a couple of weeks off. I'll see if I see anything down there.
Okay. Well, maybe, you know, maybe there's some kind of alternative, maybe not the crosswalk itself, but maybe there's some space. Yeah, David, do you have a thought?
Can you use white and do three-dimensional? Because I've seen some renderings of that, where they appear to be raised, but it's only using the color white.
It can be done. That's a specialty company. We can't do that in-house.
It's just, I mean, it's just perspective. So, I mean, if somebody outlined it, you could do it.
Okay.
And Jeff, Manville's a state road, Bedford's a county road. Do we have to get their blessing for everything we do if we change it, anyway?
We would. And I just want to go back, just so you know that Bedford Road is probably a next-year project with the county. They are actually starting Washington Avenue, or they have started Washington Avenue. They'll be doing work on Washington, the county, and they'll go through the summer, milling and paving, some drainage work. So, they're hoping to be done by the end of June with that. Just to lead into that, what we are doing at Public Works, the Center Island here at the Bedford Marble, we put a light on top of the head button in the center of the island. I'm getting a couple more lights, so at Tudor Time. And over here on, by Memorial Plaza, I want to get lights on top of those head buttons, so it'll light up where the pedestrians are, try to give a little more light to that intersection. I've worked with the county, so we, I know one of the biggest crosswalk areas that's a problem is over by Art of Wine. And I could tell you, going home at the end of the day, people come out from the Art of Wine side, and you don't see them until they're beyond the cars. So, I met with the county, and I asked them to put into their project to move that crosswalk down by Subway. And we do have Refuge Island there. We could create Refuge Island. Gives better visibility for all the pedestrians.
That's a great idea.
Jeff, are you interested in that, after what's going to be done next, with the crosswalk going?
No, they'll do all that under the project. So, you have that. You have the crosswalk over by Parkway Terrace, where that current crosswalk is too far down by Bedford Terrace. And vehicles coming over the bridge there for the sawmill, there's no sight distance visibility. So, I've asked the county to move the crosswalk further up on the bridge. So, if a pedestrian is making a crossing there, they, you can see them coming over the bridge.
On the side?
Closer up, yeah. On the opposite side of Parkway Terrace.
I think you had to patch one of the corners of the side. Can you go in there?
I'm sorry.
I'm going to explain about the faded. Yes, all our striping is faded. We have a couple of issues with that. We've had some cold weather. I need the pavement to be, get warm, otherwise the paint won't adhere. Okay? I need dry weather, which, unfortunately...
Dream on, buddy.
Dry weather, I need two or three days. Otherwise, if I put, you know, if it stops raining tonight, and I try to, in the morning, put paint down, it's not going to adhere. And the unfortunate thing is with the paint, now, they've, all the paint is environmentally friendly, so the paint does not last as long as it does, it has in the past. And the only way to really do that is using a thermoplastic paint. And that's a special, you know, specialty item. That gets down, it's a heated paint. It's like the rubberized paint that, you know, lasts longer. That's, again, a specialty company that comes in and does that. So, we do have a paint machine. We are also looking at putting a crosswalk down by Arbin there, where their business is, to get a crosswalk in that area. And that'll be happy.
Across from Tesoro, Vitalea.
Tesoro.
Right.
I didn't find this. Linda found this, but it's a new permanent rainbow crosswalk in Maplewood, New Jersey. So, thank you, Linda. So, there's one in Greenwich Village, too.
Yeah, I've seen those.
Makes sense. It makes sense. So, it exists.
Okay. We could ask, we could ask.
I think we can ask what colors. I mean, either if they were Pleasantville green, or...
You want them brighter. You want, green, green would be too dark.
Rainbow's nice, though.
Chartreuse. Chartreuse.
But we want, we want a bright color. And what we do is we put glass beads in our paint, so that you can get that reflectorization at night time. So, that's what we're doing.
So, maybe we could do a little bit of research, to find out how they were able to pull that off?
This is black and white.
That's pretty wild.
Yeah, using the shadows. I've seen that. I've seen that. That's pretty cool. It's all just shadows.
And it's all flat, so it's not any special paint or anything.
Gives the drivers heart attacks. There's a lot of thunderbenders about 20 feet in front of us.
David.
If you put it up, he'll look at it.
It's worth, obviously, everyone has a different angle on this, but in the course of our discussions about the Manville Road project, we've got a decent group of people who are upset about the ascendancy of the pedestrian in that project, and feel as though it's going to inconvenience drivers. And, obviously, as you already pointed out, that project is funded by a grant that's specifically for pedestrian improvements. We're going to, I think, substantially improve things by closing the stippling, narrowing the crosswalks, all those things. But there is an impact on drivers. And, you know, some folks have come to me and said, first off, they're concerned that it will create a traffic tie-up, which I think is, is not borne out by the studies. But also, that it will contribute to even more driver angst, like trying to get out of the train station. It's slower. I have to go around to a light. I'll just be less respectful in general. So, I mean, it can't be that the answer to those concerns is to have a driver free-for-all. So, I'm just going to have to accommodate that. But it, culture change is, is clearly important here. And as you also pointed out, smartphones, blessed gifts that they are in some categories, are a mess in others. And pedestrians and drivers have their face in a smartphone. In the course of my already-reported paragonations of the day, some, someone walked into me because I couldn't get out of the way. They're like in their phone, as a pedestrian, like I had no place to go. So, and we're all guilty of that to some degree. So, but, I mean, the idea of this public relations campaign, I think, is great.
A few years back, on, on Roamer Avenue by the school, the village put in those crosswalks that are imprinted to look like brick. They're not actually brick. It's more expensive than just painting, but less expensive than putting actual inlay brick. And then also, the school did a whole different thing. For example, at the circle, where there's imprinted into the asphalt, a, a layer of, doesn't look like brick, but it's sort of a brickish pattern of, and I'm assuming they all conform to the uniform code. I don't know if the ones in the high school do, but certainly the ones on the public street that the village did must. I can't imagine that we did anything that didn't. And they create a little rumble under the wheels, because it's, it's imprinted to look like brick, and also they're colorized, so they're, they look a little different than all the just plain white ones. And, you know, if, if, if a color were added to that, I know that it's a little bit more expensive than just painting. I mean, there are those considerations too. But, I mean, if we can think in those terms, or in that direction, in more places in the village, I think that might be helpful. I don't know. You know. I leave that all to you guys to really sort through, you know. But I think it's, it's great. And I do think that, that we, as a board in this village, should, if there's some modest level of additional expense, I don't think that it's something that would trouble me, if we could be confident that it would actually help, you know, with pedestrian safety. And, and I don't think anybody in a car really wants to hit anybody either. The only thing is, when there's a car in a pedestrian collision, it's typically the pedestrian that gets hurt, not the person in the car. So, you know, but people, people that drive, people that drive don't want to have those collisions either. So, I think it's important to make sure that, you know, things are visible, and when pedestrians are in the vicinity, they see them and, and all that. So, anyway, just something to consider.
We'll do our research and see what comes up.
Eric, what was the upshot with the audit option?
Sure. So, the state DOT, in conjunction with Westchester County, reached out to all the municipalities to see if any would be willing to have a pedestrian safety audit conducted by a third party for free. And we were one of the first to, to offer. So, we're waiting to hear back. This was, what, about two months ago, when we, actually, the night that we met, was when they did the outreach. So, we haven't heard back, but it's certainly in the works. So, as soon as we hear anything, I'll, I'll report back to the board.
Great. So, Shane, I put you on the spot. It seems like this might be a useful presentation for these folks to make at a school board meeting. Does that sound right to you?
I can come up with a comment.
Okay.
I will prepare the camera.
All right. You need like a personal drone to put this following around.
So, Shane McGaffey, 85, Manhattan Road. Thank you guys very much for the presentation. It was very interesting. One of the things I'd like to say, I, I think this, I can certainly pass this presentation on to the, to the school board, and if someone wants to make some sort of presentation, I can look into that. One thing I think is really important is, I think it's pretty clear that traffic patterns are the worst during drop-off and pickup. Worst during drop-off, there tend to be more kids that walk home from school than walk to school. And one of the things I always thought recently might help the most, in, in terms of safe routes to schools, is determining, hopefully, you know, finding some safe drop-off areas in town, where, as opposed to everybody driving to school, who wants to drive to school, finding three or four other places than school for kids to be dropped off, and then they're safe to go to school, whether there's a school aide, or a network of volunteers that runs it, et cetera, et cetera, so that, so that we can get kids, you know, we can decentralize the traffic, and gets kids to school that way. So, I personally really like to look into something like that, where we work with the police department to find where the best routes to school that are safe are, try and determine different drop-off areas, and then figure out how to man it, whether we're doing it through the school budget, whether we're doing it through volunteers, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's the way I'd like to look at it. And then, of course, there's just the normal, day-to-day pedestrian situation, where people are walking to town, the farmer's market, things at night, et cetera, et cetera. But I think if we can determine those safe routes, they'll, they'll start to be used more and more. And then we build on that. So, that's, that's my take.
Sounds good. Anybody else from the public who's attending, or want to make a comment or ask a question? You just have to come up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Linda Shankman, 5th grade at Oak Lane. I've lived here in Pleasantville for 33 years. One of the things I'm seeing now is people, everyone has their head down, texting at the intersection, I mean, at any intersection, but I see it a lot in front of the burn. So, I'm just, because I walk my dog all the time, and I just see people texting and driving. How do you, how do you enforce something to stop that?
Continually. You know, the problem is, I think, that I, I have a number of people who come up to me on a regular basis, whether it's use of handheld devices, whether it's disregarding traffic control devices. And they see it, and they say, how is it? And it's, it's the classic, where's a cop when you need one? I, I wish we could be there everywhere where it is. I think it's, unfortunately, it's one of those societal issues that has come up, and I'm not qualified to talk about these types of things, you know, sort of where it comes from or anything like that. I can tell you that we take it seriously. We enforce it. We're doing special details to attack it. It's, we're, it's, we're encouraged at the county level, at the state level, to address that, because everybody realizes just how serious that can be, and how dangerous that can be. I mean, we've all seen the public service announcements. It's coming from every level, and for whatever reason, we haven't gotten to that tipping point yet, where people really do decide it's time to, to put their phones down when they're behind the wheel. But I can tell you that we are committed to continually enforcing that. And, you know, it's a five-point violation. You're halfway to losing your license every time you get, you get a ticket for, for, you know, the use of a, a device. So, I would, I would love for us to be that village, where people say, even if I'm on my phone, I don't do it here, because we have just enforced it out. But it's, it is, there's no group, we see old people doing it, we see young people doing it. Actually, young people are probably better at it than you would expect. But there is just no limit to the number of people who do it. We couldn't, we could barely write enough tickets to keep up with it.
I wish there was like a pedestrian could like, you know, like, a little shock.
A little paintball squatch on the side of the car. Yeah.
Eric, can those new tools that you guys are talking about building in, right, at the intersection?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Looking into people's cars and sending tickets.
So, the intersection hour-long enforcement, I guess, implementation you're going to do on the shift?
We've done. We've started.
Can they, you've done it. Can they, are they writing for this? I mean, if they see it, are they writing for it?
Mm-hmm. Oh, absolutely. Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's...
How often do you think they write a ticket for this?
I'd have to go back. I don't want to, I don't want to speak to it, you know, very high. It's, it's, listen, it's also difficult. Market police cars, everybody puts their phone down.
Right.
You know, but we do try to create different opportunities where people, we're seeing them before they're seeing us. So, it's, it's, it's an ongoing challenge. You know, it's, it's, the tide unfortunately hasn't started to go out on this yet. It seems like the tide is still coming in.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Sam?
Just on that note, is it possible to get, I mean, I understand that you can't be in all places at all times, but is it possible to get the cameras that track people for speeding, or, I don't know about texting while driving, but I have experienced, like, on the West Side Highway, you know, that those cameras catch you, and then you get something in the mail. Not that I was speeding or anything, but...
Asking for...
I don't know how expensive a system or how elaborate that is, if that's in our means, but...
It's hard and frustrating.
The challenge, I, I can't speak knowledgeably. I haven't done the research on install... The challenge, I can't speak knowledgeably, I haven't done the research on installing some sort of enforcement camera. The challenge is constantly, the advent of technology and the rise of technology is still extremely expensive. To a small department like us, it's sometimes prohibitively expensive. You know, we've, I've had a number of discussions about different technologies, much of which we've implemented, some of which we're still working on. You know, it's not something where you can unfortunately go down to Radio Shack and, are there still Radio Shacks? And hang something, and then, you know, there's systems, there's backups, there's all sorts of different standards that go in. So, you know, I know that in order to implement red light cameras, things like that, you need special legislation, other types of enforcement. Again, it's not something that I can speak from firsthand knowledge of my, my research on, but it's, it's far more, I think it's safe to say, it's far more involved than, to do something on a short term. Does anybody else have another question, sir?
Evan. What's, from.
Come up to the mic, please.
Or he can repeat the.
Oh, okay.
I can do that. So, from your perspective, is it significantly safer when people sync their devices to their cars, like Bluetooth?
So, the question was, the syncing of devices to the car? Let's put it this way. I think the syncing of device, and this is, now I'm just kind of speaking. The syncing of devices shows a commitment to safety. However, I also think that the screens themselves have become so elaborate and so difficult. I find myself, even when I don't have my phone in my hand, and I'm just changing a radio station on the screen, that all of a sudden I look up and I'm farther down the road than I thought I was. I think it's just, there is a certain level of safety when you integrate the technology of your phone into your car, because you can do more without taking your eyes off the road. But I also think people have a, an inflated sense of safety when I wasn't on my phone. I just spent the last six seconds looking at my touchscreen instead. So, again, I think that, you know, the technology that the car companies have come up with makes things much more convenient, but I don't think it really gets to the root of the problem, which is, you need to be looking at the road and paying attention at all times.
Eyes out. Look out the window.
Yes. There is, there has been a lot written recently, some of which I've read about, you know, there's a political issue right now about traffic cameras. The one thing that seems to be clear in all these discussions is that they're hugely revenue-positive for the towns that put them in. I was just reading about one in Illinois, a village of 5,000 people was getting a half a million dollars a year from its traffic cameras. Now, the problem, of course, that creates is that thousands of people are getting tickets, and then, you know, you have to sort of balance that, too. But, you know, we probably should investigate it, because if we, it does, it frees.
Is it about pay or itself?
Sorry, no, and more than pay, no, these are actually, it's paying for all kinds of other things.
Put it down to the farmer's market.
No.
But, well, I think the important question, though, is, does it help? Will it help, will it help to, I don't want to say solve, but alleviate the problem?
Right.
Having a system that pays for itself, and giving people tickets?
Well, people, for sure, don't, no, I mean, it has a huge effect on behavior, too. The bigger issue is that people get very angry, and then you can have political pressure to reverse it. My understanding also is, at least on things like red light tickets and speed tickets in New York State, when they're utilized, you're not actually citing the person driving. Yeah, it's a car. You're citing the owner of the vehicle. So, my car is registered to me, I get the ticket, but I let somebody else borrow the car or something else. There's a picture of someone who looks nothing like me behind the wheel, but I'm still the one who's responsible to pay for it. Good and bad, that obviously doesn't happen a great deal, it's not something that all of a sudden, you know, there's this huge loophole. But honestly, I'll say this, you know, and I have always been a big, when I was on the road, I had no problem with traffic enforcement. I didn't mind writing tickets, and there were a lot of tickets I didn't write, but there were quite a few that I did. It's the point. People will take a fine, people will, and that's what it is. If you're not citing the driver, if you're citing the car, it's almost like a parking ticket. It's like a moving parking ticket. So, if you're on your phone, looking down and driving, and you get a ticket that's $100, that's inconvenient. But really, the fact that it's a five-point ticket is sort of really what gets people to change their behaviors.
All right.
Thank you.
Good. We are at the witching hour for the next phase of the meeting. I just want to thank you guys so much for the work you've done, and we will follow up on our piece of it. I wonder if and when you think it's appropriate, we can put this presentation up on our website. You can get that to Eric and Noreen. And we will be happy to help in whatever we can to get the word out about these lawn signs and slow down look up.
Yeah, send me a picture of the lawn sign, and I can put it on social media.
It'll be trending on Twitter within hours, probably.
Also, if you, I mean, it sounds like there are certain action, actions that you'd like to take, that you're not quite there yet with, or wanting to take an action plan, but let us know if there's something we can do, like hold a forum, and, you know, have a room available, and maybe have a meeting, and talk about pedestrian and traffic safety. I don't know if that's something that you're thinking about doing, but, you know, whatever. I mean, we're here to support you, we want, we need you to support us, and we want to support you, so we can move that agenda forward. Safety, that's it.
Well, I'll just ask one question about the pedestrian. I understand that crosswalks will look into paint colors and that kind of stuff, but pedestrian flags, I would love to hear if anybody felt that that was worthwhile pursuing. I think it would be a relatively low-cost endeavor. I haven't crunched the numbers, but I think it would, I think, under $1,000, don't quote me on that, if that's worth trying. I mean, I think, I don't know exactly how we get to that decision.
It would have to be part of a broader campaign, right? Because people wouldn't necessarily know what to do with it.
Well, they are.
Well, it is. It's part of the lawn signs and the rest of it, and, you know, having specific days, and.
Could we start it at a couple of crosswalks, and, you know, sort of try it out? Because that would be pretty inexpensive to get. I think it would be worth giving a shot, personally. I don't know how everybody else feels. But maybe try it out before we invest on.
In the whole, my profile's bought.
Yeah.
I will just say that Doris has.
No coincidence.
And it's loaded.
It's loaded there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your work.
And if, you know, contact us about the details, you know, I'm sure Eric will help you as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.